All right, welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. And we are kicking it today with our special guest, Reverend Robert Walker, who is the candidate for Ward Three here in the city of Beaumont, Texas for the May 2021 election. And along with my host, Ladonna Sherwood Haley, hello.
Hello, I'm super excited about tonight. We always have all the information. So tonight, I'm gonna try to gather some information for the folks out there so that they can make an informed decision. I'm super excited about that.
Awesome, awesome. So, so we're going to bring our guests on in about thirty seconds.
So let's tell them about Knowledge is Power Podcast Live before.
Yeah, we can do that. How about us doing that? Let's do that. I'm sorry.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is a platform to share important information by educating southeast Texas African-American communities with valuable information on health, education, finances, politics, and business. We pride ourselves on keeping our hands on the posts of this community, making sure that you are aware of everything going on in and around the Golden Triangle. I am looking forward to tonight Reverend Robert Walker for Ward Three. That one is kinda hard.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is now available on Facebook, Twitter, Spotify, iHeartRadio, YouTube, LinkedIn, Twitter. I said Twitter before, okay, Apple iTunes and Google, get a lot more. So we're all over social media, over twenty-one social media platforms. So you can find us anywhere at any time. And also, we also now have our own website. If you miss a show and you wanna go back and see a show, you can catch us at www.knowledgeispowernpodcastlive on our website. Let's, let's do this. We're going to bring on our guest, our guest is Robert Walker. He is the candidate for Ward Three in Beaumont for the election for 2021. And hey, I tell you what, we'll bring him on and just give us thirty seconds. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your hosts, Tony Redfroh and my co-host, Ladonna Sherwood and Francis Lockins.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
Well, hello, we're back and our guest is Reverend Robert Walker, Ward Three candidate. Hello, Robert.
Hello, how are y'all today?
We're doing great.
We're doing good, man. Glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Here we go. So you know me, tell us a little bit about yourself. Give us a little background information and tell us why you're running.
Um, my, my name is Robert Walker. I am twenty-nine years old. I've been a resident of Beaumont and Ward Three my entire life. I'm a two thousand nine graduate of Central High School. Currently, I am the senior pastor at Greater St. Paul Baptist Church. I've served in that capacity now three years. I'm employed by the, by Collision and Classics. There, I'm a collision estimator. In addition to that, I'm a student at College of Biblical Studies in Houston, Texas, where I'm getting my Bachelor of Science degree in Biblical Studies with a minor in Pastorial Ministries. I'm a member of the NAACP, a member of the National Action Network, and a member of the Baptist Ministers Union of Beaumont and Vicinity, where I serve on several committees, the Finance Committee, the Public Relations Committee, and I co-chair the Citywide Youth Revival Committee. So I'm not new to service, I'm not new to work, and I'm not new to affecting change. I'm, to answer your second question, I'm running for City Council Ward Three because over the years, our ward has been neglected, in my opinion, for all intents and purposes. It's been looked over. When you look at Ward Three, you can't help but see that we've been stagnant for some time now. My interest in running for Ward Three stems from the fact that I see a community that is in desperate need of strength, a community that is in need of protecting, and a community that I feel I can help in bringing back those qualities that led residents to live here, those qualities that led business owners to invest here, and those qualities that led individuals to raise families here. If you look throughout the city of Beaumont over the years, that even as the city as a whole has progressed, the North End, the South End, the avenues, and even downtown for that matter, hasn't seen adequate progress and fair services. There are infrastructure concerns in Ward Three. And please don't get me, I know, infrastructure is an issue throughout the entire city. But those Ward Three streets seem to be the ones that are worse off and the ones that are not being looked into. There are concerns with community development. We have empty lots, we have empty buildings and empty homes all throughout Ward Three. And perhaps this is the case because there is a lack of access, a lack of representation in Ward Three that is not visible nor advocating in our favor. And so I'm running for Ward Three because Ward Three deserves a councilman that can communicate effectively with other members of council, a councilman that is willing to engage with the members of the community, someone who's transparent, and I feel that I'm that, that councilman.
Uh, Robert, could you tell us where, the view is where is Ward Three and what area it contains?
Uh, it contains Fourth Street and Washington, that corner into the avenues, the entire South End and majority of the North End, Pine Street, Magnolia Street, Lucas Street. If that answers your question.
Does it, they're covered up into Halesby too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a large, large ward.
It's the largest ward in the city.
Okay, covers the Halesby area.
I didn't know that it covered the avenues and all of that.
Yeah, right.
I didn't know that it extended all the way to Washington and Fourth, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we just, let me finish so I can make sure I get that. And so it covers the North End, it covers Halesby, it covers the South End, the historical Cheltenham district. It covers, also, it goes to Washington Boulevard, right? Then goes all the way west to Fourth Street, correct?
Correct.
Then you have the avenues in there, you have, um,
I didn't know that.
Yeah, you have the Cartwright Edition and that area where Roberts and Cartwright runs in, all the way to Fourth Street. And from Fourth Street to College Street, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a huge ward.
I forgot to say College Street too was in Ward Three?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, so you have a huge ward to cover because over, on the other side of College Street, if you're going north on Fourth, then Ward One takes over, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm pretty sure, thought I knew what I was talking about.
You sound like you do.
That's a huge ward and, uh, so I, I feel like, uh, by you being, I understand you lived in Ward Three, you grew up in Ward Three. So you know Ward Three.
Yes, sir.
Ladonna?
Tell me, what do you think has prepared you for this city council position? We wanna know why, how, how have you prepared to, to take on this job?
Um, I, I feel that my work as a pastor, my work as a collision estimator, my work with various organizations and life in general has prepared me for this position as a member of council. Uh, whether it be at church or on my secular job, my number one priority is serving people. I'm in the business of engaging. Day in and day out, I'm advocating for individuals. Day in and day out, I'm trying to make sure that the individuals that I come in contact with know that they are important, that they have a voice, that they can and will be heard. These jobs that I work require that I listen with intent. They require that I weigh all the options. They require that I communicate what is necessary for the benefit of my clients as well as my congregants. More so, these jobs that I do on a daily require teamwork. In church, I work with our leaders to ensure that our church is moving forward and that we are progressing the Kingdom of God. We work together on budgets, we work together on growth strategies. And in my secular work, we deal with an upwards of fifty cars on a weekly basis. We start every morning with a team meeting so that not just one person knows what's going on, but so that the entire staff is up to date, so that the entire staff can answer a question, so that the entire staff can effectively service the needs of our customers. And so I feel all of that combined is what has prepared me for this position as councilman.
Can you, you, me, Tony, or you got something?
No, you have it, baby.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit about the duties of a councilman? What are the actual duties of a councilman as you, as you would identify them?
Um, in general, the city council as a whole is a group of individuals that have been elected to serve as the legislative body of city government. The city council members have been tasked with representing the interests of their constituents. In essence, the ball gets started with the city council. The duty of the city council is to listen to the voters, hear what the voters have to say, evaluate their concerns, and submit those concerns to the city manager and his or her administration. And the city manager takes those concerns to his or her department heads. In a nutshell, the duty of a city council member is approving budgets and proposing, uh, resolve and ordinances that will enable for a better quality of living for our citizens.
Well, I'm proud of you. Now, on that question, I am super duper proud of you. I cannot tell you how many times I have asked that question on this platform and haven't had a person simply break down the duties of a councilman in relation to the city manager. And I just wanna tell you, if you ain't did nothing else right in your life, you made it plain, well fooled and not ever on that, okay?
Thank you. And we've had, uh,
A lot of people on here, okay?
Politicians on here that don't, didn't explain their role. What is the role of this position you're running for?
What is the role? I've heard everything from military to this, to that, to you name it. And we just wanna know what you do. Do you know what you're doing and what is the, okay, anyway, before I get all off of this.
Robert Walker, again, people were talking to Robert Walker, who is running for Ward Three in the Beaumont City Council, Eric Containing in Beaumont for the, of May twenty, uh, twenty-first, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one election. Yes, Robert, I'm, if I ask you the next question, it sounds like you've done your, your research, you studied, and, and after you wanted, you are the first to answer that question. So we said, we decided as, as a group, as a cast, and we're gonna ask that question because we've never received a direct answer. So you answered the question that we've been waiting for, for the last three, four weeks. So I hope they're watching so they understand, go back because we're gonna ask this question again. What is your role as a city councilman, as a board trustee, or whatever you're running for? We wanna know, do you know what you're running for? Are you doing right?
Right.
All right, so now, Robert, ask, I'm gonna ask this question. What is one major issue you plan to address?
Um, the one major issue that, that I would like to address, and, and it's a popular issue among all candidates, and that is the issue of Beaumont streets. I'm on social media a lot, and when discussing Beaumont and what needs to improve, to be improved, infrastructure and street repave is always at the top of the list. More notably, the infrastructure in Ward Three. Our city conducts what is called a PCI, a Pavement Condition Index. We, as a city, contract a company to come in and grade our streets by percentage. Out of this assessment, the city publishes this list and what grade this company gives those streets. At our city council meeting about three weeks ago, our Director of Public Works and Technology Services made the statement in response to the question, what streets are given top priority as it relates to being repaired or repaved? He said those streets that are graded sixty percent are lower. This list that the city of Beaumont publishes is about two hundred and forty-five pages long. So of course, I, I didn't have time to go through every page, but what I did do is randomly select streets that ranked under sixty percent. And what I found is that the majority of those streets are streets in Ward Three. Don't get me wrong, I understand that Beaumont is not a new city. I understand that Ward Three is the oldest and the most historic part of our city. But I can't seem to understand why it is taking so long to get street improvements in our community. Somebody say, well, there's budgets for that. But how the money is budgeted should be evaluated. I, I'm not saying this is not happening, but what is allocated to each ward should be on a need basis and not an equal basis. Because there are some areas of our city that are better off as far as streets than other areas. Now, of course, we don't wanna go around raising the taxes of our citizens. So that means we look for federal grants. That means we look for private investors. That means we look at our budget and we find items that could be held off and possibly take that money and move it into the repair infrastructure fund.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
I like that, I like that. I like that, Ladonna?
If you could change one thing in the zoning code, what would it be and why?
Um, before I answer that, let me say that like with everything, the zoning code has its goods and it has its bads. I've talked with several real estate developers and even residents that own private dwellings in our city. And the concern that keeps coming up, conversation after conversation after conversation, is that it seems that there are too many hands or too many avenues to get something accomplished. There are essentially three areas when it comes to building and development. There is commercial, there is residential, and then there is industrial. And so when you take something like a residential property and you want to build an add-on and you pull a permit to get this work done, you are then told you need a different permit because the permit you have is for a single-family dwelling and not for a duplex. Because under the umbrella of residential, you have single-family, you have apartment, you have duplex, and there are many others. But the point I'm trying to make is that paperwork and footwork could be cut down if these zoning codes were revitalized and made more conducive for local development, which leads me to another point, and I know you only asked for one. But perhaps there should be a committee that is designated to the education of development. For example, if me and my contractor have plans to develop, there should be a person or persons to review our plans. And once they've been reviewed, then me and my contractors meet with this specific zoning board and they outline for us what we need, what needs to be changed, why it needs to be changed, and even ways to go about making that change. I was in a conversation just yesterday with a developer, and he said, out of his own experience, that, that too many times, if the zoning board declines something, they never really tell you how to go about fixing what they've declined.
That's a huge problem. Now, that is an issue. Now, that is something that definitely needs to be addressed in as a small business owner when you're looking at all sorts of red tape and you may wanna create a new company or you may wanna branch out into something else. And when you start thinking about all the things that are gonna come against you and obstacles that you may have to face, you, you, you know, it's a deterrent. So I, I, I.
I appreciate that answer, but let me ask you, what could you do? What could you do? What would you do if, to change that zoning code? Which, what would it be, why and why?
Oh, I, I, I don't think I can effectively answer that question only because I, to be completely honest with you, I don't know the relationship between the council members and the zoning board.
No, I'm sorry, I missed a word, zoning code.
Zoning code.
You're right, which zoning code, I'm sorry.
Um, again, I, I honestly don't think I can effectively answer that question only because I hadn't really looked into the specific zoning codes as far as where they line up.
Might need to be changed or altered, you don't have, you're not privy to that. Now, I have a question. How do you plan on really getting the residents involved in the decision-making process for their community?
Um, engagement and involvement from our city and from our community, for me, is a major thing. As I stated, perhaps a time or two during this discussion, as a member of council, you are an advocate for your voters. In essence, you are the bridge between them and our city management. You are their voice. The city provides each council member a personal email. At the very least, I would encourage the citizens to email me what they think is best for them as it relates to issues and concerns. I know we have a period during our weekly council meeting for citizens to speak, but I wanna hear from them directly. Personally, I'm a big user of social media. So that's another avenue whereby the voices of our voters can be heard. But in order for that to even begin taking place, there has to be some, some sort of transparency. In my experience, it takes too much to find out anything in Beaumont. There, there's no direct to any information. One thing I would do if I'm elected is host a monthly information session, even if it's virtual. What that means is that once a month, I would upload a video addressing the citizens of Ward Three. In that video, I would share progress over the last month. I would share what we have accomplished as a city and as a ward, what we intend to do as a city and as a ward. I would address some of the concerns that our citizens face. It would basically be something to let the community know that I hear you, I'm doing everything in my power to help you. That, 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 that it's something that, that really can't be done during our normal council sessions.
I really like what you're saying right there, that's really good.
Yeah, because not everything makes it on the weekly agenda, but it's something that our citizens deserve.
Now, I'm really impressed with you with that information video because that information station is volumes because a lot of the citizens are coming up to me and really what I'm doing with the get out the vote, not to make it about me, but they, they are like, you know, we don't know who's running and we don't know why they're running and we don't, we don't have access to information readily available. And sometimes things that are dealing with the city council and things of that nature, you're right, people can't get to those council meetings. And, and sometimes those council meetings don't cover all the things that are actually, people need to be able to go to some information station, location, page, whatever, or video, monthly video update, something. Keep us in the loop because otherwise it does give the impression that nothing's being done or issues aren't being heard or things aren't being recognized. So I, I, I really like that, I really like that idea.
If anyone or someone or contractors or group come to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, how would you evaluate whether that project was or is worth implementing?
When it comes to bringing anything new to the city, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be business, I think the number one question has to be, what benefit is it for our citizens? Will this create jobs for our city? Will this create revenue for our city? There's a big push for the city and for the school system to work together. So will it be something that, that keeps our high school graduates in Beaumont? A lot of things may sound good and a lot of things may look good on paper, but if there is not a benefit, I think it needs to be reevaluated. But on the other hand, it could be something beneficial. It could be something that brings in investment and something that brings cash flow to our city, but the timing may not be right. There's a lot that goes into what would be worth implementing. And I think it goes back to having a council that is able, able to work together. It goes back to having a council that, that have common interests and, and that's not the interest of self and self-agendas, but that's the interest of our city. That's the interest of the voters who put the council into office.
Well, I'm extra proud of you, honey. Now, I wanna say this on tonight. We talked about a lot of things, but I want you to dig deep now on this one. What makes you stand out from other candidates? We need to know.
Um, what makes me stand out? Several things that, that make me stand out from other candidates. In every aspect of life, from my work as a collision estimator to my work as a pastor and preacher, and, and I think I touched on this earlier, my number one priority has always been serving. I am legitimately at my core a servant of the people. Understand this, a lot of people service the people, but not many are servants of the people. Over the years, through both my church work and my secular work, I've been able to, to develop the skills necessary to see the needs of other people. I have a sense of empathy, I have a sense of awareness, and both of these allows me to understand. Another thing is my ability to inspire and my ability to effect change. Lastly, and probably the most important, Lastly, and probably the most important in the eyes of some. Is my ability and my desire to work as a team. We keep hearing, and it is a fact, that in order to get anything passed through council, that you have to have four votes. With that being said, we cannot get change and betterment for our ward and for our city without coming together. I pride myself on being able to get along. I pride myself on being able to hear out my teammates. I'm simply saying that we cannot stand alone. We all have to be on the same page. Without compromising our beliefs and our morals.
Robert Walker, everybody for a candidate for Ward Three here in Beaumont, Texas.
I got something else, it's a little bit off the cuff, but I gotta go there since you 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 drill, you bring it in, so I'm gonna go there. Okay, so I'm listening to you, I hear what you're saying. What happens when that conflict arises? What happens when that disrespectful teammate becomes belligerent and rude? And using invective language or abrasive, uh when they get out of line, give me. The Robert Walker that's gonna straighten it out. I need to know, we need to know what happens when conflict arises. Because we know that those council meetings can get a little ratchet, right?
Yeah, uh that that's true, uh but I I. Every everybody knows, I've spoke about it throughout this entire discussion, I am a man of faith. Uh so my first reaction is always to pray. Uh prayer is always my number one. Now, when prayer uh has been prayed and things are still going south. Um I I do have some of my dad in me, God rest his soul. Uh that bulldog mentality, that if you're backed into a corner, you come out swinging. Uh and and so I I can go there, but prayer is my number one.
Look, like like Toby say, try Jesus, honey.
Okay, Robert Walker, let me ask, go here with you. What can you, how can you make a difference in your community?
Uh, I can make a difference by continuing to do what I'm doing. Um continue to show and prove to others that change only comes through being heard. Um continuing to serve and continuing to be of service.
Um, quick question, you know, so we're hearing more about the politician side, but the people wanna know you. So tell us what you do in and around Beaumont. What do you do? What is your favorite place in pastime? Give us a little bit about. What you do outside of church or for fun and things of that nature.
Uh, well, to be honest, uh a- as much as I spend time there, uh my workplace is not at the top of that list. Uh but but honestly, I I do spend uh the most of my time at my church. Um it's my place of solace. It's uh my place that I can think. Uh evaluate life and life's circumstances. Um, a- another place I spend a lot of time, and and I guess it's because I like to eat, believe it or not. Uh is Elanas on College. That is by far my favorite restaurant. Uh I I think I honestly go there about three times a week, if not more. In fact, uh when I walk in the door, they know exactly what I want. Uh I don't ever have to tell them I have the manager's number on speed dial. Uh so, so I I spend a lot of time there, uh and and at home. Uh I I just, I I'm, I like being by myself, uh gives me time to uh, as they say, think of a master plan.
Well, if you are, if I didn't say this, let me ask you this quick question. Uh let's see how I how did I would write this? What would you do if you lose this election? Will you continue to support your community and city or just gonna go back to the sideline? What are you gonna do?
Um, losing for me won't change anything. Um, losing won't change the love and the compassion that I have for my city. Um, losing won't change my desire to see change and betterment. For Ward Three and for the city of Beaumont. Um without any doubt or hesitation, I will continue to serve my community as well as my city. Because me running for city council is not about winning. It's not about losing. Now, of course, like everyone else, I would love to win, but for me, this is about serving. Um, this is about making a change and making lives better for the citizens of Ward Three. Winning just puts me in a better position to make that change. But that change is not contingent on me assuming the office of councilman. If me running for city council doesn't do anything else, it empowers the younger generation. And shows the young leaders of our city that someone young and someone from the community. Can set out for something greater. It shows them that your past, your upbringing. Uh nor your resources or the lack thereof can hinder you from accomplishing what you've set out to do.
Okay, Pastor. Now, let's get your take on the downtown area and revitalizing the nightlife, honey. So we wanna know, how could someone make it successful? Let's go there.
Oh, I I I think downtown is an area that has seen stagnation for a while now. Uh I I see an area that has tons of potential. Uh an area that is just brimming with possibility. But it's an area that if it's going to be successful, uh someone has to be passionate. Um it's an area that's going to take a vision to make downtown what it could be. As far as someone making it successful, that would require, first of all, the desire to do so. Uh it it would take money and it would take a clear understanding of what is needed and what is necessary for our city. And uh I I got no problem with uh Beaumont downtown becoming uh popular for its nightlife.
Robert Walker, people who is running for Ward Three here in the city of Beaumont, Texas. You you talking about a change, everybody always wanna change, we need to change. Okay, now you're hearing the change now, guys, we're hearing the change. So.
I got a retro friend that sent me a text, Tony, we gotta get this question in, honey. Need to know now, I need to get you in on this. Why go after an incumbent?
To be completely honest, um the incumbent does have experience. Um but experience hadn't progressed Ward Three in quite some time. Um e- experience hadn't, experience hadn't listened to the voices of the people. Uh experience hadn't enacted change for a while. And so I think it's time that, you know. I hate to say it like this, but I think it's time that experience steps aside. And allow fresh ideas and uh fresh outlook on things to come in.
Well, honey, go ahead. Um let's see, I got, I got questions coming in. Coming in from everywhere. Tony, go ahead with the next one. Let me pull up my screen, honey.
Okay, well, I have quite a few of myself, so I'm not, I'm not, I think I would just ask one, one other question. And I'm gonna go to the comment board and and uh those who are watching or listening, you can make your comment. And I will ask the question for you and post it up for our our next new candidate. Well, go ahead, he's there.
If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?
To get a handle on our city's finances and to gain some ground financially. I think it goes back to a statement that I made earlier on. As it relates to reevaluating how city money is spent and how city money is budgeted. So I suppose the first step would be reevaluating what we are already doing. And uh and how we're already doing it. Uh speaking from experience, uh dealing with budgets where money is not readily accessible. Uh speaking from experience where there is already a current budget in place. As a newly elected councilman, I would bring fresh eyes and fresh ideas to something. That is already rolling. Number two uh would be consider branding our city. Um let our city work for us. I understand that brands are um perception-based. And because of that, we can always combine capital and ideas in new ways. To leverage our city as a brand. Every city has a brand. And perhaps Beaumont just don't know what its brand is yet. And when you look at it, that plays a part into the development of our city. Beaumont need something that attracts individuals. Thirdly, and perhaps, uh this is probably my favorite, and that is investing in our citizens. Beaumont is filled with local businesses, but they are just that, local businesses. We should look into helping those local businesses go global. Or even go regional, which will in turn bring real money back to our community.
Tell me a little bit about uh how you feel about uh B I S D and the city uh council. And people of that nature working together or doing something as far as uh the kids uh. I know Brandon was talking about an initiative with the plumbers union and these places where they pay you while you're going to school and all of that. Tell me how you feel about B I S D and the young people and things of that nature.
I I I think uh what you just mentioned with Brandon, it's probably like a co-op program, I'm not one hundred percent sure. But I think a partnership between the city and the school district is of uh vital importance. Um because we have graduates who leave our city every year because there's nothing here keeping them here. And so if if the city of Beaumont were to get engaged with the school district. I think can better better handle on what our young people are looking for. And we're, we will be in a better place to keep them here as opposed to them going to a bigger city such Houston or Dallas.
You're absolutely correct. Um, Tony, did you have a question? Um, I'm trying to.
Yeah, um actually, I'm I'm trying to download so we can go into our community board in a minute. But I wanna see if I can uh get it. So Robert, uh we've asked all the questions I'd like to ask, and we're gonna ask one more question. And we're gonna go into the our community uh board for events that's coming up uh in our area. What does Ward Three means to you as far as its structure? Making the area look better and dealing with its infrastructure. You don't have to ask answer the infrastructure, I think you already answered that, but just those other two questions. Do I, do I have to repeat it for you?
No, 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 sir, no, sir. Uh a- as it relates to the structure and um of Ward Three. Uh and even its infrastructure for that matter, uh to me, it it means improvement. Um to me, it means evaluation. And to me, it means work. Uh I I'm sure I I speak on behalf of many, if not all, Ward Three citizens. When I say that we don't expect overnight change. We we don't expect something bigger, bright and better to come in a matter of days or weeks. But we do expect progress. We we do expect our voices and for our desires to be considered. And discussed.
Um, somebody's asking, how do you feel about young people uh stepping out and candidates running?
I I was on the phone with a friend of mine the other day and and I I made mention to him. Uh all the young people that are running for local office as well as school board uh seats. And I I told him that, you know, I I think that this is the perfect time for Beaumont to become more progressive. I think the national election played a major part. Uh not only in voter turnout, but even in young people wanting to get out and and. And go for an office such as city council. I I think it's a great thing. I think it's going to um have a lot of great results uh as it relates to the people that are coming behind us.
I'm super excited about all the young people and I'm actually excited about everybody getting energized. And I'm trying to do my part to energize people. It doesn't really matter who you're voting for. I just wanna make sure that your butt is at the polls. So we, the turnout has been so low in Beaumont till we really don't have a right to complain. If we're not gonna vote the people in or out of office that are not adhering to what we want and need. And I always say, if you don't like what's going on and you don't like your councilman and you don't like the condition in your city, baby, get out. And get 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 down there and let's do something about it.
Robert, I I tell you what, Robert, you have really shown me, uh I I'm impressed. Let's me say that I am impressed. I was impressed when you spoke to me um a few weeks ago and I was on, excuse me, but I was online when we was vetting you. Uh and I didn't want you to know I was on that line, but I was on that uh uh Zoom call that that. I've heard you before and and you impressed me then, but now you impress me more. I wish you all the best and luck and prayers are going to you. And I hope you come out on top in Ward Three, because of course, you know. Uh you know, you got good, you you got incumbent you you are going against, you got to work hard.
Yes, sir.
And if God be, if God be for you, who can be against you?
That's it.
So uh so I wish you the best, God bless you and thank you for accepting our invitation. Yes, yes, and we can do it again, okay?
Have any last words that you wanna say to the people or something that you wanna say for why they should vote for you or make your plea? This is it, here we go.
I I I think I think my words have spoken already for themselves. I I just want to encourage everyone watching to get out and vote, because your voice does matter. And like you said, if they won't change, they have to go out and effect change.
That's it, that's all, that is it. Thank you, Robert.
All the time, all you have is two powers, voting power and buying power. Where you spend your dollars and who you vote for. And if you throw either one of them away, you in a sad state of affairs.
But Robert, I will have, I thought I had questions for you in the comment box, but all the comments are are just compliments, complimentary. So that's a great thing. Everybody's complimenting you on on your uh your show tonight. That's Marion George Brown. She said, yes, you have done your homework, your research, she's proud of you. Uh let's go here with Brenda Davis is telling you cheering for you and cheering you on for Ward Three. And Alice Felix Ramsey is saying, what is the criteria to, oh, she has a question, what is the criteria for the federal ballots coming into Beaumont? And is it earmarked? Maybe you wanna ask that question, give you thirty seconds.
Oh, well, I don't think I can effectively answer that question tonight. But uh if she sends me a personal message on Facebook, I'll be sure to find an answer for and send it to her.
All right, Barbara Barbara Thornton, uh the Houston, Texas said, if she, if uh uh if you would have my vote. If you live, if I lived in Beaumont, uh you're young, you're willing and you're serving, you're very knowledgeable and well-spoken. That's good news. And of course, of course, again, Mrs. Ramsey saying, tell you, tell it like it is, your truth is always a winner. Uh how about our friend from the South End, uh Cheryl Richard Jackson said, you better, oh, she just kind of, you better tell him. But go here, uh go here and uh let's see here, well, in other words, she says she loves it, she's amazing, your truthfulness. Uh uh it's amazing thing, my friend. So um and Lydian Brown is saying, you're a very young, smart young man, which I know that, I recognize that, very intelligent. And knowledgeable young man, man. So you've got a lot of, lot of people pulling for you. Uh they want you to be the best and wish you well. Uh and of course, um uh. We like, we acknowledge the Power Podcast Live, I loved you to come on again and visit with us. So if you, if you elected and you get the seat, we really wanna talk to you there, you know? So we're gonna go into the, uh we're gonna go and switch up now and we're going to go to the community board. And uh I one thing I'm gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna have Ladonna. Uh Sherwood, my co-host, she's presents a. She's presents a, uh, um, meet and greet every Wednesday and the night, tomorrow night is Wednesday. And the meet and greet would be a fundraiser event for Begita, uh, and then to Smith, uh, for mayor, um, at Nell's Sports Bar. So, uh, you want to tell me a little bit about that?
I am super excited. I've been trying to get as many of these done as I possibly can just to kind of energize the community and make sure that people know who's running and, um, put up a get to vote, uh, get out the vote initiative. And this week is Begita, next week is LaShawn Proctor. And, uh, I think that will be our final week. We may have another week after that, but I think that takes us to the end of March. And by George, I am tired, but it says be vocal, vote local. We'll go to Europe with Nell's Sports Bar every Wednesday in March. Come out, come out, come out and meet people and talk a little bit.
All right. And we have the community outreach. Uh, it's gonna be Thursday, uh, uh, 11th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Uh, the mask required and, and food, boxes and water and more will be, um, issued, uh, to one box per person for a family. So that's gonna be at, uh, which, which church location?
Um, that's gonna be at Pastor Andrew's Church, I believe.
On Highland Avenue. Yes, yes, yes. So the community outreach this Thursday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM handing out food, boxes and water and more. Pastor Andrew and his wife are at the, uh, I don't know the name of the trade, I can't think, I went blank, but anyway, right, right? It's sponsored by Lamar University, uh, Harvest, Harvest. Yeah, that's the baby's harvest. Uh, Operation Blessing, World Vision and the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints. Uh, on Thursday, we, of course, you know, we are added another third, uh, night on our show is Thursday night. We're gonna have the incumbent at, um, at City at Large Councilman, uh, Randy Felschall with us on Thursday at eight o'clock. So I'd like you to be here with us so we can ask some questions. And I like to hear some hard questions and we're gonna post them all up and get it here for you. And thank you again so much. Yes, thank you, Marionette. Harvest of Lost Souls is where the community outreach would be, uh, on Thursday at 11:00 AM. Please be there. Now, again, Randy, Randy Felschall will be with us. Uh, he's a incumbent of the, of City Council at Large here in Beaumont. And he will be with us on Thursday at eight o'clock. So join us then and, uh, we'd love to have you here. We'd love to have everybody here. And we enjoy your time. We enjoy your viewership and we love you. God bless you and all as well.
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.